Good morning, we'll call the meeting in order, start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ed, Jennifer? Aaron will be here, he'll be on virtual. He is called. He said he'd be getting on, but he couldn't make it, so he'd be on virtual.
Alright, um, approval of the June 10th, 2025 meeting minutes?
So moved.
On the minutes, if we could, let me pull them up again. On.
I have a.
Yeah.
Actually, sorry, one second, there's a, a motion technically on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion?
Yeah, so on the adjournment, um, says Councilwoman Plunkett seconded the motion? If we could change that, that'd be great.
I've heard that.
What is the problem?
I've heard that, yeah.
Yeah.
Just throwing that out there.
You know, probably was sharing last time and I didn't catch that in my proofread, my bad.
And then, on the council comments where I was talking about the job descriptions, that was, the, the goal was for that email to be sent as a collaboration with the commissioners and the council, not just me personally and the compensation committee.
The compensation committee and who?
Like with the council and the commissioners, like agreeing to send that email.
Is there an amendment to your motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve these minutes with the corrections noted by Councilman Mann Plunkett, uh, which would include amending the correction in the adjournment and then also add collaborative, uh, along with council and bullet number two in the council comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Has, um, Councilman Williams joined or has anyone joined virtually?
He's not on the.
Okay. Um, legal update.
One of these days, the roads will be cleared and I can make it here in more time and fashion. Real quickly, the, the big issue that I want to talk to you about today, so this is your first meeting under the new applicable law that says that your meetings have to be streamed, um, and then recorded. Now, I know that you guys have been doing this over the past few years, but I think it's important because there's going to be a lot more eyes on meetings themselves, um, not necessarily from your constituency, but some from your constituency, but also from other regulating, uh, bodies that want to make sure that entities are following the law. With that said, I think it's very important that this council and, and the members in attendance keep in mind that it is just as important for those in the room to understand what is going on as those who are attending online. So, uh, my recommendation to this council is going to be that we try and keep closer to the rules of procedure so that the person speaking is the person that's going to be recognized by the chair, uh, that goes for the council and then also the members of the. We have a lot of elected officials who are very engaged in their duties and what's going on with the council. Just take, let's make sure we have a clean record. That's all I really have for you today, any questions?
I should say, with that being said, I know we have a public comment section, but we're also going to ask elected officials or department heads to hold your comment, we, we do value that, I would like to hear what you have to say, but we'll ask that you hold that until public comment. Thank you. New business, TMSC invoice, uh, Auditor Crum.
Sorry, if I could just interrupt once right before you, uh, with Councilman Williams on line now, we now are a virtual meeting, so all of your votes will have to be roll call and you should announce that he is in attendance as well.
Okay, thank you.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay. Um, during our state board audit, we have to send an attorney representation letter to the attorney that was, um, doing the work the year the audit is being performed. So 2024 was Bob Clutter, that was our county attorney. We had to send him a representation letter stating that he needed to sign in return that there were no outstanding, um, lawsuits or large claims that were over millions of dollars. He then sent us a bill for $750 and I'm asking to pay it out of county general, not the auditor's.
Is this 24 business or 25 business?
So it's the attorney that represents the county the year the audit is, so it's 24. Beth also had to produce one for 25, but.
Well, is billed in 24 or 25?
25 money.
Officer Prong. I don't know if you're offering your means.
Yes. Yes, we can.
I think someone's asking about 24 and I guess my question around that as well is, you said we received a bill for how much was it?
$750.
I guess my concern is, the services, the audit was in 2024 and we received a bill for $750. He was under contract in 2024, so we're paying for services in 2024. Isn't this just standard practice, like the audit couldn't have been conducted until 2025 and then the services, I'm sorry, the audit couldn't have been conducted until 2025 because we had to finish 2024, correct?
Correct.
Was he paid in full for all of his services for 2027?
Yes. For his contract, yes.
My concern, for his contract, I guess my concern is, if he was paid in full for all of his services, I guess that is, I'm just challenged in the principle of paying an additional amount and he was paid in full for all of his services for 2024 and that's what this is for. And I'm sorry, I didn't know who was asking the question around, uh, this working.
John Reiner asked the question, Eric.
Alright, thank you.
But isn't this a separate representation letter that is above and beyond the services rendered? Because it's a requirement that. So we never get billed this way?
I mean, this is the first time we've gotten a bill for a representation letter from them. In the five years that I've done the audit. I'm just asking it be paid, if you're going to pay it out of county general, I'm not going to pay it out of my auditor fund.
Again, if the council's going to pay this, I would, I, I, I personally have challenges with it. I know we, I guess we have to pay it, I think that the principle behind this is wrong in every way imaginable. Um, I think Officer Prong just said that we've never been billed for this before, all services that have been rendered since 2024, uh, to attorney's letter at his firm have been paid for, it's never been done, the principle of this is quite out wrong. I think it's, it's just wrong for us to be billed for this. Uh, it is, is our new attorney not paid for sign off of this, I guess I don't understand that.
Not for 2024, it has to be the attorney that was representing the county at the time the audit is being performed.
Are there any other questions?
My only concern would be if, if, uh, is there going to be any more billings come along that we don't know about, let's say go back a year or whatever into 24, it's going to come in? In other words, there's a cutoff date sometime, if this is a business in 24, that should have been paid in 24 and never been in the contract.
Jewel, are you able to comment on like the scope of a fee agreement and engagement letter? And when.
I mean, I definitely have to pay.
So I don't know about the engagement letter that was in place with, uh, Commissioner Clutter and, uh, the county, but I can tell you is that I have had to sign audit letters two years or three years after the date because State Board of Accounts comes around at different times now. It looks like they're doing your 2024 audit right now and so it is just one year removed. You don't create the engagement letter, or the engagement letter, the representation letter and the statement of what is outstanding or possible liabilities that the county may face until the audit is going to occur. And so this is now what that could have been performed in 2024. So, I, I can tell you that the work that was performed happened in 2025, whether that falls under the engagement for the 2024 representative, I, I can't answer to that. But it, it is commonplace that, well, it, it is absolutely the facts that the audit letter from attorneys will happen at least in the following year, if not later.
Is it possible that we're receiving this invoice because he is no longer the county attorney? Whereas in years past, it would just fall under each new yearly engagement letter he had?
Yeah, I mean, it, it could. Since he was under engagement in 2023, he could have written it, uh, the letters in 2023 under that, I, and just tally that under the next year, I, but I, that's speculation.
That said, I'd make the motion that we pay that out of general.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'm second.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? No, we'll do a roll call vote, um, Councilman Reiner?
Aye.
Councilman Lamar?
Aye.
Councilman Plunkett?
Aye.
Councilman Ritchie?
Aye.
Councilman Van Horn?
Aye.
Sorry, Councilwoman. And Councilman Williams?
Next.
And, um, I will be aye. Motion carries. Next matter, um, the resolution for investment and depository policy, Jewel.
So before you, is a resolution that talks about establishing a policy for investment? So, as a fiscal body, it is your duty to create the policy and oversee the finances for the county. Beth reached out to me earlier and indicated, hey, I don't see an investment policy here for the county, so she actually created this document. What it is, is essentially for the excess funds that are going to be invested, this is not just your simple day-to-day operations that you keep in a bank account, but the investment of your funds, that this is the policy that's going to be followed, these are the institutions that are approved for that, the three that have been identified in here are, I believe, where the investments are currently going, that is Key Bank, North Salem State Bank, and Trust Indiana. Uh, if there are other institutions that the treasurer would like to invest in, she can bring that to you for consideration and amendment to this, but you have to have a written, uh, investment policy for those funds.
And this was also requested by.
So is that something we need to vote on, approved?
Yes, this is a resolution for consideration.
Are there any further questions? Is there a motion?
Please second.
Yeah, Nikki Voldemort, Boone County Treasurer.
Can I, I'm so sorry, but, um, can I ask that you hold your comment for public comment?
That's fine, it has to do with the Board of Finance and the investment policy, but that's fine.
I'm sorry, thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, we'll do a, or is there any further discussion? Do a roll call vote, uh, Councilman Reiner?
Aye.
Councilman Lamar?
Aye.
Councilman Plunkett?
Aye.
Councilman, or Councilman Ritchie? Aye. Sorry, uh, Councilman Van Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Aye.
And I will be an aye as well. Uh, motion carries. Next matter, commissioners, I believe it's going to be Commissioner Pell, resolution of council to allow commissioners to obtain appraisals.
Good morning, uh, thank you for allowing me to be on your agenda today, Scott Pell, Ben Kennedy, District Recommissioner. I'd like to, uh, ask for your support or approval to go forward, uh, at the property of 1903 Indianapolis Avenue or the Bowling Alley, which is situated right in front of the Justice Center. It is for sale and I think it would be, uh, good business for us to check and see if there is possibility that this could be a good investment for the county to own this building, kind of be able to control our neighbor. The Bowling Alley is for sale now and it probably would stay a bowling alley, but we don't know, you know, we don't know what would happen in the future, so, uh, this is just the first step of, uh, probably a multi-pro and multi, uh, faceted option to, to look into purchasing this. I've talked to the sheriff, uh, he's all, he's all for it, he thinks it would be smart to own what's right in front of the Justice Center as well, so there's, there's also been, it's not really controversy, it's black and white on the paper, but the southern end of the Bowling Alley has a parking area that is actually the county's property. So, with, with us owning the parking lot, if you look at the property lines, the Bowling Alley has almost zero parking. It, it's just a really poor way that the property lines line up. I don't think we would be interested in selling the, uh, parking lot. We had an appraisal on that, I just saw this morning, it appraised at $39,000. So, I think it would be better for us to possibly look into seeing what we can do with that building if, you know, we get 14,000 square feet, so that's my request today.
And the resolution before us, this is just, um, a resolution to permit the commissioners to obtain the appraisals, correct? This doesn't mean that you're going to purchase anything?
Yes, ma'am.
Any idea what the cost? Do you have, you're getting one appraisal, two appraisals?
I think we need two appraisals, uh, to be able to bid on something and we can only bid to the average of those two appraisals.
Estimated cost?
Uh, I don't know the cost on the appraisals, if we do the building, I know that the parking lot was $1,800.
Okay, so we'd be looking at approximately $4,000 in total?
I can get back with you on a, on a cost, but I, I don't know the cost.
Okay.
To be, to be honest with you.
Do you anticipate asking us for an additional or do you already have these funds, um, in your budget?
Do we have the phone number for that?
Yeah.
Are there any?
Scott, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Let's assume for a moment that John Smith wants to come in and purchase it to keep it as a bowling alley. And those dollars that are coming in, in the years to come, as a bowling alley is a business here in Lebanon, Boone County, Indiana, and it's going to contribute to the economy of Boone County, Indiana. Now, with that being said, what does the sheriff's department want to do with it, understanding that if, if, if and when the sheriff department did have control of it, did own it, they wouldn't have anything that monetarily would contribute economically to the city or the county?
I think the sheriff gives his support on, on the county owning the property, I don't think he has any direct plans to do anything with the building. But as the county proper, we'd have a 14,000 square foot facility that we could remodel into offices or, you know, multiple different things, so. I don't think it was actually, if I, uh.
It's going to be used.
He's just in support of owning it so we can control what's in front of the main doors of the Justice Center, so.
And it will be used?
I, I think we can find plenty of uses for it if we, yes. Thank you, sir.
Are there any further questions for Commissioner Pell?
I have a question.
To finish that off of what Kevin just asked, you're going to get an appraisal on this and the assumption is that you want to re-model it or to use, the first question is what is that you choose, wanting to be, but also knowing, I think, there are also, uh, plans to re-model to keep a building and other things, and your predecessors spent, uh, I think around $200,000 for plans to put, um, you know, remodel, uh, courthouse and other things, add all of that factor into this now, buy another asset, remodel. Again, I know you're giving an appraisal, but you're not giving an appraisal just to get an appraisal, like add all of that factor into it, especially when your county, um, like ours is something down around a similar place, you know, financial challenges.
Sure. Uh, I, I look at that as two different types of office space for the county to own. The Key Bank Building, I think, is reserved for, uh, offices that are in conjunction or support the courthouse, where attorneys or prosecutors or whomever, however we decide we're going to do the Key Bank Building, they can, they can walk back and forth to the courthouse. With parking being a premium, if there's office, if there's offices that we could relocate that are not courthouse dependent, that might be a good fit for the Bowling Alley, it's still in town, but it's, it's a way, we get, you know, open up a little bit of parking, downtown parking, getting, getting some offices away from the downtown area, so. I think it's a little bit of getting the cart before the horse, that's just kind of in my head ideas that, uh, and I think we have multiple good ideas that we can, we can groom from, from owning this property.
I mean, thank you for that, I remember the question, uh, I get where you're putting the cart before the horse, I think we may be doing that, while you're getting an appraisal, I'm assuming the appraisal is because you want to actually re-model the building, but have you looked at what the actual cost would be? So, again, going back to it, the current, what current that is in Bowling Alley, so you're going to get a multimillion dollar renovation of that facility to turn into office space, so have you looked at the county's costs and said, this is what in conjunction the cost could be on that and how you're going to take that into account, looking at, again, the county's financial situation?
I have not looked that deeply into the project.
Another question I might have, when they do the appraisal, will it be an appraisal for the Bowling Alley and a business or just for the building?
I'm assuming they would appraise it as a bowling alley.
Okay.
Because, you know, that's, that's what's in there and that's our real property that's attached.
But if you appraise something and it's making a hundred thousand dollars a year, that's going to make the value of more. If it's losing money, then it makes it quite a bit less, I think.
Right, but we can still only pay what the appraisal.
Be just for what the building, what the building would be by itself, not the business.
So generally speaking, when you talk about acquisitions from municipal entities or governmental entities, the appraisers are well versed to understand that, it is what is the just compensation for this property? When you talk about, um, even when it comes to the world of eminent domain and you're taking property from a potential business, the case law is very clear that it is forepart, the land and the structure, there's no business loss that is calculated into that or business income that is calculated into that, because it is too remote to be able to truly accurately pin down to justify the use of taxpayer dollars for. So it, it really is just what is the land and the improvements that are on.
Not a business appraisal, just a.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any further questions for Commissioner Pell?
I got one and it's a little off, but it, it came to mind, did you say that we own a fair amount of that parking lot?
Yes, we do.
So what kind of liability does that put us at, somebody falls, trips, gets hurt or whatever coming out of the Bowling Alley?
Well, I, we've signed a lease, um, I'm sure with our attorney, we would probably write in, you know, any disclaimers that we're not responsible for whatever happens, but I don't know truly if we would, we'd probably have a little bit of liability no matter what because we own it, so.
But in the lease, are we listed as a additional insured, I guess would be my point to that.
Morning, Council, Beth Copeland, County Attorney, um, the lease was written in 1963 or 64.
So probably.
So the entire purpose, so this whole thing originated because the Bowling Alley is for sale.
Yeah.
Um, they are, um, unable to secure a seller because they don't have sufficient parking and so they'd have to get a variance from the BZA in order to get parking. The commissioners, and forgive me, I don't remember if this was April or May, approved an appraisal, to do an appraisal on the parking lot just so they could evaluate, do we want to sell it, do we want to lease it, do we just want to give them an easement to be able to use it? So that was originally the concept. Um, so if the idea is to not pursue a purchase, then the commissioners are going to have to decide, um, is this something that they'd want to enter into a, a new lease since the last one is from the 60s, um, or if they would want to just do an easement and allow the next user to be able to just have access to it?
Okay, okay, thank you.
And Scott, if I, if I remember correctly, I think it was the last meeting, maybe two months ago, where you guys, must say you guys, somebody from the commissioner's office brought in a map that showed when the, uh, new lines were drawn and there was a little triangle there in that parking lot that the county had owned and you used the word.
What they did was they cleaned up some overlap lines, is that, that's what you're asking about?
Yeah, and so, and, and when we saw that map, it was from the bird's eye view, I don't know, maybe 300 square feet, that we wasn't sure who owned that, and when I say we, the Boone County, uh, people that mapped it out. And it looked like that, uh, there was a small portion there that there was some discussion, well, who owns this, does the bowling alley own it or does the county own it?
If, if I remember.
And I, I'm sorry, since I was the one who was overseeing that, that just might help expedite. So, it, the Bowling Alley does not own, there was never a question of whether the Bowling Alley owned any of those triangles that were created when the jail land was surveyed. Um, the, the west side of, I'm sorry, the east side of the property line is the Boone County Building Corporation, which is a nonprofit organization quasi-related to Boone County government. The west side is Boone County Commissioners. So what I was trying to do was to alleviate those triangles, wherein quite honestly, it's the same, but it's not, because the building corporation's a nonprofit organization and the government is the government. So, there was never a question of whether the Bowling Alley owns it, because that would have been a substantial concern, because they would pay property taxes, whereas the nonprofit and the government entities do not. So I was just cleaning up survey lines.
So it's fair to say when Scott says that the county owns a substantial part of that, what we know as the Lebanon Bowling Alley parking lot, a lot of that property really belongs to Boone County?
Yeah, well, yeah, so I have, yes, I have the map in my office that I can bring in if the, if the council would like to see it, so, I mean, if you think, if you can, if you can visualize, uh, north and south to the west of the cemetery, what was east of there is the building corporation, i.e. the Justice Center, which in reality, when this thing is finished being built, that land should be deeded back to the county and it should all be one. What is to the west of that, which is directly south of the Bowling Alley, is the county.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Commissioner Pell?
Are there any other, like, offices or elected officials or commissioners involved with this project, Commissioner Pell, besides the sheriff? That, the sheriff like?
I, uh, I, I, if I understand your question, is there another commissioner on board with this, is that what you're asking?
Not just another commissioner, but I know you mentioned the sheriff and anybody else, like commissioners, other elected officials?
Oh, I, well, I think, uh, well, I know Tim Byers on board with this, doing the step, step one, this appraisal. Donnie, uh, has had mixed emotions on it and I don't want to speak for him on where he stands with it today. But yes, the sheriff and specifically any other office holder names, I have not really spoken too much. spoken too much about it with anybody. So that's what I could offer you today.
Um, I've got a question.
Okay.
Um, if in fact they have that money in their budget, we really don't have to take action on it, do we?
Well, we, my understanding is the first step is we have to almost, uh, give them our blessing by signing this resolution. Like they have to have our permission or approval, those probably are not the correct legal terms, by moving forward this resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
We want to work together anyways.
Yeah, sure.
Any further questions for Commissioner Pell? Thank you. Is there any further discussion with the council? Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote. Councilman Reiner?
Aye, yes.
Councilman Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ritchie?
Aye.
Councilman Van Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Aye.
Thank you. And then I will be an aye as well. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Jim Caldwell, Advanced Fire Department?
Good morning. Thank you for replacing me on agenda. My name is Jim Caldwell, I'm chief of Advanced Fire Department here, speaking on behalf of Something Cloud, something that affects every one of us, whether we think it's about a day or only when crisis threats are vulnerable to fire departments. The, right now, we're asking for your support on the modest tax increase and other tax increase really gets any input, but let me tell you why this one deserves full attention, your support, our volunteer power firm in definitely community here where if they leave their jobs, their families are warm beds in the middle of the night, not for pain, not for recognition, but to protect us. We respond to fires, accident, medical emergency, floods, disasters of all kinds. They show no matter what the time, no matter what the danger, times of disaster, volunteer power station is a place of safety and recovery. If you look at Texas, that's exactly what's going on. In the past two years, the run load has doubled. In the last year, my同事had to go through a destress briefing twice because of fatal accidents on Stigler 32 and 74. The growth in women can cause this until we have more tax base to meet the struggling needs, there's, here's the truth, we can't keep this, uh, doing this without the equipment, limited training resources, underfunded facilities. Fire trucks need maintenance guarantees to meet modern standards. Terminates funds to recruit, train and maintain volunteers because volunteers need support. The problem with that, when we have those critical incidents, I lose volunteers every time. Tax increases we're proposing is small, House phone 1454, this is a just for volunteer fire departments, public safety, local tax, that's our point 001, insert amount, like less than one cent per 100 income, but a huge impact. This is all for township and volunteer partners. It would mean better response and where a certain recognition for a partner makes the difference between saving a home or watching it burn. There's no doubt about the safety responsibility of protecting what matters most. Every dollar we invest in our fire department, that are invested in our homes, our families and our future. So this morning, I ask you not to think just as taxpayer for the neighbors, let us come together as a community and give our volunteers the tools they need, keep us safe and show them we got their backs. This includes Jameson, Thorntown and Copeland Fire Departments. Right now, the requirements for volunteer permit, I think John Reiner said a long time ago, that we just give eternity gear and say, don't do anything stupid. Now I've got to have tremendous amount of training, most of the equipment I got has a life expectancy, uh, ten years, I got to replace $3,000 with a tourniquet gear on each one of them. Uh, air packs are about the same, have to be certified every, there's an extended cost of maintenance of the equipment and the volunteers and the training requirements. It's tough. We've been surviving, but that's by surviving. We need to survive instead of survive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need questions or discussion?
I know the money that we gave the three departments at the end of the year was well used. I mean, you bought new extrication tools, correct?
No, that was the damn thing on the new truck.
Yes, and.
$187,000 for the truck.
You just, yeah, last week, you ended up cutting that girl out of the car, 17 minutes from the time you arrived and she was out of that car and on her way. So that's, that's what they do.
Jewel, are you able to comment at all on House Bill 1454 or what that process would even look like?
I don't have all the details of, uh, House Bill 1454 at this time. I can update the council on some of your information regarding that. As to the processes, it would be an increase in the levy, but I'd have to take a look at how it would impact everything else.
Is that something, if the council so chose that we could discuss during budget workshop? Thank you. We'll look forward to that information. Um, the NeoGov funding request, Ms. Copeland?
Morning, Council. I am pinch hitting for Amber this morning. She had a conflict arise. So this is kind of an, uh, an interesting presentation and the reasoning for bringing it before you this morning is really just to begin discussion more than anything. There were some notice deficiencies, so you can't actually take a final action vote today, but if you could engage in some meaningful conversations and maybe imply how you're feeling about this overall would be very beneficial for the county. If you watch the commissioners' second meeting in June, they approved adding, I believe, two or three new modules on behalf of the county and then also on behalf of the sheriff. Amber created me a little cheat sheet, but she said that part of that was to elect to discontinue the learn module and transition OSHA training back into the IPEP system, which better aligns with our current needs. And my understanding, speaking with Brittany, is that the sheriff's, uh, module that they are liking is to be able to add background checks. Right now, they do that separate. This would all be done within the same system. You can imagine that creates a level of efficiency. So in investigating, or in investigating that, commissioners decided to approve these additional modules. We have subsequently determined in conversation with the auditor that there is still funding available for those new modules. So that will not be part of the discussion that will be brought for you for August. But I give you that as background because as part of this, we discovered that the actual underlying contract for NeoGov is set to expire and needs to be renewed. And that's what will be before you again in August. Commissioners will approve the contract, but we need the funding, uh, from council to be able to do that. First year is 66, it appears to be $66,710.99. The reason why we're asking for a meaningful conversation today on this is there is money set aside to pay for these additional modules. We don't want to pay for these additional modules in the next few weeks if the intent of council is to terminate NeoGov entirely. If you're not going to fund it, then I don't want to pay for the shiny new things on the side when I don't have the underlying data, if that makes sense. So, um, I don't know if there's anything else that I could offer or add?
Do, how many years have we been working with NeoGov? Do you know that, Beth?
I believe since 22.
Yeah, so we've invested a lot of time in establishing that database. So we, we need some type of management tool and to switch from NeoGov would cost additional monies. Because not everything transfers.
And I was only pretty, I went, there were two compensation committee meetings in June. I went to one of the two, but I do, uh, Commissioner, sorry, wrong body, council member, Plunkett, and I know Williams was at one and can speak. NeoGov was discussed as part of the compensation committee. It does, it, I, I don't recall whether there was any disgruntled people not in support of, certainly they can speak to better what their memory is of it. But yes, it's been around for several years and worked on. And I do know that the sheriff's office supports this, given that they requested the commissioners.
And they did an in-depth study because they, they were very concerned about, um, private information being disclosed or being seen by other components.
Yeah, I wish she was here, Brittany, um, Brittany's on board based on my conversations with her.
Who did it? Who did an in-depth study?
Police Department, Sheriff's Department.
Okay, I, 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 I know it was Sheriff's Department last week and, and they're not available to get here today because they're at the Sheriff's Association. We talked about NeoGov. I think they should, it needs to be allowed, the opportunity to speak, um, on their own, at least on their own behalf, about their desires for NeoGov, um, wanting its support and all their concerns. I'll let Councilman Plunkett speak to, um, I guess what his, you know, views are from the compensation committee. And I don't know if there are a lot of people who are on the compensation committee, speak to it. I think while we had NeoGov for several years, the challenge of our instinct that we were never fully utilizing NeoGov. So while we had it, there was never full utilization of it and having a tool and not utilizing it to its full capacity always presents challenges. Uh, there are some benefits, uh, to it and Debbie Bromson can speak to this. I think in this new proposal, there will be the elimination of some existing tools that we have that may offset some additional costs, which I think is a plus and a benefit to the county. But I also think that there needs to just be some clarity on the governance model. I think, and I know that is a conservative Sheriff's Department, because I spoke with the sheriff directly last week about this, um, and I spoke to his executive leadership team as well. So, um, I wouldn't go out and say that they're fully supportive of this by any stretch because, and I know them directly last week. Um, so I think they need to get forward the permission to speak directly on this, um, at our next council meeting.
Are there any other questions for Beth from the council? And there's nothing for us to vote on today. I believe this is just discussion for councils. Is there any further discussion from the council?
So from what I picked up on it is there are, are, if I remember correctly, is there some departments that would use much more of it than others? And some liked it more than others? Right, I don't know that there was a big general consensus of, hurrah, let's go run with it. But my personal thoughts on it is, is there's things on it that I remember liking and there's things on it that I thought, why would we use this? So I don't know, I could tell you a yes or no right now anyway.
Any further council discussion on this matter?
I would say, I would say the last meeting is that, um, I don't know if Commissioner Pell is still the room or not, um, I think the Compensation Committee is looking at this and taking some significant strides, sort of together, if you have a number of elected officials, I mean, that's his point, where there are certain parts of this modules that that spoke to that work well for some departments and others that don't make sense. I think that's what you're saying is you kind of look at it and you're like, why would we use this for other departments? I'm like, hey, this makes perfect sense, you know? We would, we would love this if you're like, this doesn't make sense for others. I think the Compensation Committee can make up that is on it, something that makes sense to others, don't. Uh, but I think the Compensation Committee, uh, even with what Ken B. Switaker obviously said recently, they're putting some structure around it to go be evaluated. And I think getting their intuitive feedback would be valuable as the council wants to make a decision on it. I think overall it can be beneficial for the, the county, but getting the intuitive feedback from the compensation committee would be valuable, Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, um, Councilman Williams. Next matter, the retroactive HR salary of January 1, 2025. Art Crum, I'm going to ask you to assist me with this one. My understanding is, I believe it was in April, we approved a salary increase for, um, the HR assistant. At that time, we had received a payroll change notification form and, um, they had requested that the payroll change be effective January 1, 2025. And while we approved the payroll change, uh, we did not make that retroactive or effective to January 1, 2025. So Art Crum, we just, is it correct? We just need to correct that to make sure the line is.
Retroactive payroll change form that Mr. Byers signed.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Jennifer?
Yes.
I have a question around this. So it's a payroll change form as the actual role change itself, because I was informed that this role is changed as well. So can you or someone from the commissioners off the shed light on this because it looks like this role is changed now to the director of HR?
So my understanding is maybe a month, month and a half, sometime it lasts two months. I don't know if it was a promotion or if they've changed which line HR employee is being paid out of, but yes, that has changed. But my understanding is we still have to correct this line that, um, this employee is being paid out of.
Can just for clarity, no role, it's self-assured as well?
I can't answer that question.
My office is not.
That would be.
Payroll change form stating that, so.
Go ahead, sorry.
Hey, you would have to speak to a commissioner after our meeting, um, I think to get some of those questions answered.
I'd like to, I just, before we take a vote on this, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding because it seems like there's going to be a significant pay change in this, so if the role is changed as well, Debbie, I don't know if you ever think as well, a bit of K change and a role change in this, and there's further discussion around compensation out of this council, they're going to consider a role out of time, making sure that roles were commensurate with, um, you know, qualifications and things of that nature. So I just want to make sure you're getting a level of transparency, you know, equity across the board. So Commissioner Pell, can you speak to that?
I, sorry, Aaron, we're, we've asked that, um, comments be held until public comment from elected officials and department heads. So I don't believe it would be appropriate to bring Commissioner Pell up at this time?
But this is a, but this is, I get that, but this is not off subject. This is relevant to a payroll change of the role that we're discussing. This is not off subject of what we're talking about. This is, we're talking about a payroll change. So this is relevant to this particular role. So this is a payroll change and I'm just asking, hey, has the role changed? Because from my understanding, this role is changed to an HR director that we're about to make a vote on this.
Can I ask? Yeah, I think I understand what you're saying. I, so I don't know if this clarifies it. There's two, if you look at the salary ordinance or, um, the commissioners' Form 1, their budget, there's an HR director position and an HR assistant position. We're talking about the HR assistant line and I believe it was April, we approved, um, an increase in that salary, but we didn't make it retroactive to January 1st. I believe since then, I, I don't necessarily want to call it a promotion, but they, oh, I think I lost you on your camera. Oh, sorry. They then moved that employee to the HR director line. I'm, I'm not going to call it a promotion or, but I'm not sure what they did there, but we still have to correct the HR assistant line so that our salary ordinance matches correctly. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, so I want to go back to my, my question. We're correcting and retro paying the HR assistant. Is that correct?
I believe that already happened. We're just correcting the line.
Okay, so we're correcting the lines. Are we going back to back pay anyway?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Going back to back pay.
Back pay? No.
Are we going to back pay anyone?
No.
So we're correcting the, we're, we're correcting this line and there's no back pay?
Correct.
So you are correcting this line for what reason exactly? Like what profit dollars?
Because our motion, so the payroll request change form that we received in March or April asked that it be effective to January 1 of 2025 and our motion in April did not include that.
Can I speak to this?
So the, the balance in the salary ordinance is not going to be correct? Thank you, Jewel.
So I believe the issue is here that you had taken action that did not clearly just make it clear that the change in the assistant, uh, the HR assistant line was retroactive to January 1, 2025. The pay was paid as retroactive to January 1, 2025. So now you have a non-matching essentially like salary ordinance and line item.
So now you have a non-matching essentially like salary ordinance and line item in that salary ordinance. This is just to make the document correspond with what has actually occurred for the pay of the HR assistant.
And Joel, am I correct that even if there is no employee in this line, we still need to correct it so that our salary ordinance matches?
Correct.
Thank you.
So whether or not anybody's sitting in that seat at this point, remember salary ordinances are the maximum that you can pay a official director. You don't have to pay that, but it's the maximum. And so you need to adjust it so that the maximum is, is there because you've already paid some of it.
And my understanding, or my recollection from our April meeting, Aaron, was that this, I believe Commissioner Byer explained to us that with this increase in this pay for this position, that was still within the salary wage setting matrix.
No, Joel, I appreciate your clarification. I just think, again, if you say it's retroactive, and I'm trying to figure out and make sure that we're not back paying anyone because apparently there's no one sitting in his seat. And I under, from what I understood, that there's been some changes. So I just want to make sure that there weren't any of that.
My understanding is the pay was already received. It was just a matter of us clarifying and cleaning up our motion from April. Any further discussion with the council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Councilman Rayner?
Yes.
Councilman Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ritchie?
Yes.
Councilman Van Horn?
Yes.
Councilman Williams? And I'll be a yes as well. Motion carries. Old business budget workshops. At the conclusion of this meeting, we will start our first budget workshop. But I just wanted to briefly remind everyone of our upcoming dates. We'll have budget workshops after our council meeting on August 12th, on August 19th, August 20th, September 9th, and then October 9th. We will get an update from Baker Tilly shortly. Liaison meetings, while they can happen now, because I believe Form Ones are due next Thursday, it may be more beneficial to have those after we receive our models from Baker Tilly. Are there any questions or discussion with the council?
I know I received an email yesterday from Sherry. And I would just ask again, I would just ask you, if we could just get information a little bit ahead of time, if at all possible. I know we got it, again, just, you know, hour before today's meeting, just in case we need to add a special meeting once our sale is canceled. We're a little tired of all of them. And we just need, we really want to be thoughtful, fight for that. So we're not, you know, straggling it. Again, if there's a question, you know, set aside time, you had more conductive, it was a compensation group, you know, a day before the issue.
Thank you. We also have September 10th. I believe that's a if we need it date, though.
Okay.
Any further questions, comments? All right, we'll now move in a public comment. For public comment, I'll ask that anyone in the room speak first. You'll be given two minutes. I will, at the 30 second, when you have 30 seconds left, I will raise this orange folder to notify you of that. When you do stand up to speak, please state your name, address, and your business in the county. After everyone in the room has finished, then I will turn it to virtual to see if anyone virtually has a comment. Any public comment within the room?
Boone County Prosecutor, 220 West Washington Street, Kent Eastwood. First off, Scott, if you guys keep the bowling, Scott, go. Well, he'll keep the bowling alley and the video games going. You guys can move me up to the bowling alley. So I think my staff will enjoy that. As it relates to NeoGov, I just, just a little frustrated and I'm not, we've been holding on everything since December. We're not, we haven't expanded our use, we're barely using it because we don't know which way anyone's going. So it's just been a little frustrating because I think we are in support of and that the idea of NeoGov and having something like that. I would encourage you guys to look at the larger offices. I don't, I'm not trying to speak ill of some of the smaller offices, but the larger offices, I think, are in favor of using systems like this. Being the prosecutor's office, we've used it in the past, but we're holding off. Highways used it, probation's used it, community corrections has used it. The sheriff is now on board. So those are your five largest offices. I don't know what percentage that takes up of all the employees in the county, but I think it's probably a fair, a fair, a fair amount of those employees. So I would ask both the council and the commissioners, if we could get moving on this. It'd be really appreciative because we're, like I said, we've been holding this since December on, on this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Nikki Baldwin, Boone County Treasurer, 209 Courthouse Square. I'm speaking on topic 4B on behalf of the county treasurer and the board of finance member. So in January, as required by law, we have a board of finance meeting. Bob Plutter was the attorney. It was discussed, we would revise the investment and depository policy, obviously, he's no longer with us. So that did not get done, but that was discussed and on our agenda, you know, to take place. And as the board of finance work on that and present it to the commissioners and council for review. So just so you know, that was on the outlook. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, it's me once again. I truly believe this public speaking policy was addressed to me, and I'm good with it. Debbie Ottinger, 1126 Berry Drive, London, county recorder. I want you to please consider adjusting or making some kind of maybe adjustment to the speaking issue. I'm good to stay quiet, but I think Nikki would have had some good input before you guys make a decision. And by the time it gets to public comment, you've already, sometimes already voted on issues. So what I'm saying is if there's an issue on here that has a direct effect on a specific office, Debbie, I mean, on the salary thing. So I understand everybody doesn't need to be up here talking about everything, and I get that. And I'm trying to be very cognitive of that and respectful of that. But I think that if you could work in some kind of flexibility, and I don't know how that would happen, Joel, but if there's an, I think Nikki should have been able to explain that to you. That's the, her job as county treasurer is investments, and that might be things that you guys didn't realize or didn't understand. So I know that you've got a lot going on, we're getting ready for budgets, but please at least think about that. That maybe make it, add some exceptions to that speaking policy if it's directly related to that issue for that elected official. The other thing I would like to offer is that if you do choose, this is on the lighter side, to buy the bowling alley. Just want to make sure you knew, I was on the Ball State bowling team, and I give free lessons to all employees.
Any further, is there any further public comment from the room? Any public comments from anyone online? Okay, we will move on to council comment. I believe that it's five minutes, and I will also give you a 30-second warning.
Okay. Kind of hate to admit it, but I agree with Debbie wholeheartedly, that if it's a, if it's a, something up here that is the treasurer's business, she'll be able to speak. Now Debbie might not get up and speak for the treasurer, but the treasurer should be able to speak. Or if it's her office, she ought to be able to speak. Because if not, they might bring something to us that might change the vote or inform us better. So if it's pertaining to their office, I think they ought to be able to speak.
I will talk, Joel, hopefully you can give us some more insight on that. I know that part of this is coming directly from the new statute that went into effect on July 1st and trying to keep things clean for the live streaming.
In case she was going to say something, that might have made a difference in what we did.
Thank you. Any more council comment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Do we do roll call for a motion adjourned? Okay, Councilman Rayner?
Yes.
Councilman Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ritchie?
Yes.
Councilman Van Horn?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes as well. Meeting adjourned. We will take a quick five-minute break before we start our budget workshop.